At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Mr. Shaw, and I believe we have a quorum. Is that correct?
President Crawford, I cannot see all the members. It would be helpful to just do a quick roll call.
Okay. You're going to do that?
That would be great, because I only count three members plus you at this point.
Okay. There are a couple more.
Is General Sumter there?
Yes. Yes, he's here, present.
Ms. Hawley?
Present.
Mr. Bartley? Senator Bates?
Present.
Mr. Dashil?
He'll become later.
Dr. Getty?
Present.
Dr. Green?
Present.
Ms. Chang?
Present.
Dr. Millie McCarthy?
She's en route.
Ms. Morrow?
Present.
Ms. McCusker?
Present.
Dr. Wilcox?
Present.
And Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Yes, Mr. Crawford, you have a quorum. Thank you.
Great. I would like to ask everyone to join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As you know, all of the state board meetings are recorded. The public can access our meetings via the State Board MSD website, the Town Hall streams, and the YouTube. And meeting videos, agenda, and materials are posted there as well. As you look at the background, it looks a little different than Baltimore, because we're not in Baltimore. We are here in Washington County. And I just wanted to say, you know, one of the things that Ms. Hawley suggested a couple of years ago was, we need to get out of Baltimore and go around and visit people. And it's taken us a little while with COVID and everything, but we've finally gotten out. We had an invitation from, a gracious invitation, from Washington County to come out. And also, as part of that invitation, we have Garrett and Allegheny that also here. So we are extremely humbled and delighted to be here. We had an outstanding tour this morning. It was just absolutely outstanding. What we'd like to be able to do is just have more of a conversation. We are humble enough to recognize that we don't know everything. So getting out and talking to you is very helpful to us, because it helps us, as we're developing policy, if we better understand the kinds of challenges that you're facing, I think it helps us then make sure that the policies that we develop are right in alignment with where we all want to go. So we're very, very excited. I want to just thank the staff here in Washington County and MSD staff for making this happen. My experience is, anytime you're involved in an effort like this, and it looks, and it's running smoothly, it's only running smoothly because a whole bunch of folks have devoted an extraordinary amount of time and energy to make it happen. So I want to just acknowledge them and thank you. Want to get right into our questions. I was just, I had shared with some people this morning, I said, you know, this morning, I felt like I had my mother speak to me. My mother's been gone for about 40 years. And the message to me was, one, these people have invited you to come in their house. Don't, don't, don't act up, you know? And then the second thing she said to me was, don't embarrass me. So those are the two things. I'm going to try to make sure that I adhere to those, so my mother will be pleased and proud of me. Want to just, again, we're interested in a conversation, and we just threw some questions out as a starting point. We don't have to stick to them, but we just wanted to, is it worthwhile, or just, probably just to facilitate time, just to go, is to really talk to us a little bit about some of the unique challenges and opportunities you're facing here in Washington County, and in particular, success stories. We saw one this morning, success stories. We're, again, so let me just open the floor to President Williams, and however you would want to proceed is fine.
Thank you, President Crawford. It is indeed a pleasure to have all of you with us, and we thank you for the very kind words, and we appreciate this opportunity to share with you this morning, or this afternoon. With regard to success stories, we have quite a few in Washington County. And one by far is our pre-K program. We are able to offer to all four-year-olds a free pre-K program. And we have programs in all of our elementary schools. We had an elementary school that we weren't able to fit a program in it, but we have it in a nearby high school. So we're quite proud of our pre-K program. And it was with the foresight of the board and the superintendent that we made that pre-K program a priority. So that by far is a success story for us in Washington County. With that program, we are experiencing success. We're getting great feedback, and we're very grateful for the fine staff that we have in those programs. A concern and a challenge and an opportunity that we're faced with is, under the blueprint, is to be able to provide, in partnership with private pre-K programs for three-year-olds. That's a concern right now. We've identified that we would have need for 750 to 800 spaces for three-year-olds. And at this time in Washington County, we have one private daycare that's able and is working towards the establishment of a pre-K program for three-year-olds. So having the capacity to meet the needs of the number of students that we have and to find the places to have those programs is a challenge for us. Dr. Savine, did you want to add anything to what I've just said?
President Williams, I believe you've captured it quite well. I'll just add that, in addition to the strength being our universal free pre-K four-year program, the three-year-old program, we, does present a challenge, because as was mentioned, we have one childcare service. And our team has been working diligently to work creatively and to cultivate those relationships. The current daycare is located in the suburbs of the county. And the greatest need perhaps is in our more urban setting, in Hagerstown. So any assistance the State Board could provide in assisting the local boards with cultivating win-win partnerships with our youngest learners, in this case, our three-year-olds, and certainly our daycares that already exist, and thinking creatively. And I know this board has been very creative in their approach, but there are challenges in terms of making sure our pre-K three, for three-year-olds, finding space and making sure that we're serving those populations and students that our greatest needs is really a challenge at this point. You experienced today another high point for Washington County, thanks to the strong leadership previously of Dr. Boyd and Michael and this board. In addition to preschool, they also saw the need to invest in an apprenticeship program and CTE, thanks to the state. Seven years ago, you provided us in Washington County an opportunity to pilot an apprenticeship program that was embraced by this board, embraced by leadership and our school system team, that has grown to the most robust apprenticeship program in the state of Maryland. So those are certainly some highlights, but as our board has discussed challenges, while we see great value in serving our youngest learners, it is a significant challenge in terms of finding space, because we've maxed out our space with our four-year-old program, and then we have limited traditional daycare options available. And then being true partners with our community businesses is trying to find that balance.
Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. I think when, one area that we've really been looking at is, is that the impact on the childcare providers, these are small business people. So I believe that the department issued some guidance just recently to try to help with, at least financially, help with some of the issues. I know it's very important for the superintendent, and he's very much involved, and we're trying to do that. On the CTE program, a couple of things that caught my attention, number one was the engagement with the business community. In a former life, I was with the general accounting office, and one of my programs was to look at job training programs, essentially for the disadvantaged. And one of the things that you typically saw was no real connection to local business community. So it was really, I was very, very pleased to hear the engagement. And I know you've got an event coming up this week with the local business community, and not only making sure that you're teaching subjects that have interest, but also making sure that the technology and the approaches are current. And the other thing that caught my attention, there was much there, there are three things in particular. The second thing that caught my attention was the cosmetology program, the success rate. I've been around some of these programs in other locations, and I dare say that what I've seen in other locations is that far less than a majority of the students actually pass the cosmetology test, because it's hard. And the thing that I really liked what you were doing was, in addition to teaching cosmetology, you were teaching business management, business plans, for these folks can go out and open, eventually open their own shops and be very, very successful. So integrating the business with the cosmetology. And the third thing that I liked was the, your teacher academy and giving the students an opportunity to work with young, with young children. You could see that sort of fired up their juices a lot and got them thinking, you know? Some were saying, they started off, they thought they wanted to be teachers, and then they realized, maybe I want to do something related to that, maybe I want to do this or that. But it, but it just, I think these young people will be great ambassadors for others in the system in terms of the opportunities. So there's just a couple of things that come to mind. Please feel free to speak. And also, you are more than welcome to share insights about the state board, you know, because we don't always get it right. So, you know, if there's some things that we're going to make you crazy, then please feel free to say that. We're here to learn. We will make adjustments. Our goal is to try to create an environment where we can take advantage of this once-in-a-generation opportunity, the blueprint, to make a significant difference in the educational outcomes for our children. So with that, that's our top priority, is how do we do that? How do we do it? And we know we can't do it alone. We have to engage you, because you've got great ideas and great suggestions in it. And we also recognize that one size doesn't fit all. So what works here in Washington may not work in Montgomery, or vice versa. So being sensitive to that and figuring out how we move forward in a way that makes sense. So please feel free to just share whatever insights you have. You're not going to hurt our feelings or anything of that nature. We're here to learn, and then, and we're family. Because if we can't speak honestly and frankly as family, I mean, when can we ever talk that? So please.
Well, I would like to add with the CTE, while we're on the subject, if you haven't received this yet, you will, if you would just take a few moments to scan and take a sneak, not now, but take a sneak peek at some of our completers successes, it will take you not very many minutes at all to see why we're so proud of this.
Yes.
I think that our unique challenges are probably not so unique, and it's find and fund. We need to find high-quality teachers, and we're doing a lot with our Grow Your Own Tech is not the only place we have completers. We have 32 high school students who are apprentices now in our school system. We have a partnership with Frostburg Downtown Maryland to grow your own teachers with an accelerated program to get your teaching degree. But funding, help, we could, we could use anything in that area to continue to generate ideas that allow our passionate staff to pursue the best possible alternatives for our children.
Absolutely. Very good.
So just to piggyback on Dr. Zentmeyer's request for help with funding and sticking with the career and college readiness pillar of the blueprint, dual enrollment presents some challenges for us. Hearing from staff that out of the foundation money, I think it's something like $540 per student that we have to use for the courses that, and we pay fully for the coursework that they take at Hagerstown Community College, that barely pays, I think, for one, and we have some students who are taking as many as 10 courses. So if there could be additional funding to help with that, that would be tremendous. The foundation funds just aren't enough. You know, enrollment is, or not enrollment, but tuition is one thing, but, you know, there's text fees and textbook fees and lab fees and AP exams and all of that. And the per pupil allocation, as it is right now, just isn't what it could be or should be.
And with the blueprint, we will require almost 100 new teachers in order for elementary teachers to teach 60% of a day instead of the current 80%.
I worry about pre-K being expanded to three-year-olds. I, I don't know if this is a good analogy or not, but I coached youth soccer for many years. I coached high school soccer for a total of 27 years. And there were times when I would have a player come to me, a varsity player, JV player, and say, "Coach, I'm going to quit. I'm going to quit the team." And when you ask them why, they started playing when they were four years old, they're burned out. I don't know if that happens to students in education or not, classroom settings or not, but I just wonder if pushing it down to three-year-olds is pushing the envelope a little bit. I don't know. What, I get what's behind it, low income, give them the opportunities, I get all that, but I worry about them, putting them in a more structured environment too soon. I don't know if that's, applies or not, but that's my feeling.
State board members, feel free, Ms. McCusker?
I think maybe probably one of the really important components, as we push it down to our younger students, is that we make sure it's done in a developmentally appropriate way. You know, when we talk about structure, what is the developmentally appropriate level of structure for a three-year-old? And we have to make sure that when we do push down into pre-K and we, and down as young as three-year-olds, that we do it in a thoughtful, mindful way that's research-based and really, really keeps in mind that they're three, and that the structure around them should honor that and be appropriate. I think that that might be part of the key to making that kind of a program in schools work for our youngest students. We have to keep in mind to what a three-year-old does, and the work of a three-year-old is play.
Yeah, right.
And I think we have to keep that in mind. So thank you for sharing that concern. I appreciate it.
I'd like to go back to something that Dr. Zentmeyer said. How is MSD or the state board helping with the teacher shortage?
I think we're looking, we're doing several things. One, the LEEDS grant provided resources for grant opportunities, especially focused on Grow Your Own. We're also looking at, we did a regulation that allowed us to, in effect, extend the probation or that eligibility period for teachers. We had a number of teachers that had provisional teachers that had performed well in the classroom, but were struggling with the licensure issue. So we approved a regulation that gave them some additional time. And I think you probably heard our superintendent really start to talk more about an evidence-based approach. And what he's been sharing with us is that while licensure, as we have traditionally been doing it, has been effective, there may be even better ways to license teachers, not just the examination, but other provisions. So he's working, we're working with PISTAB, starting to look at, apparently some of the more forward-leading states and communities are starting to look at really an examination of the person's performance in the classroom in combination with coaching and additional support as ways of determining meeting licensure requirements. That's something that's in the pipeline. We're not there yet, but we are having conversations with PISTAB about that, because what I'm being told is that, that this latter approach seems to produce teachers that are well-prepared and functioning in classrooms, maybe to some degree, maybe equal to, or maybe even better than what the traditional approach has been. But we've got to look differently at this. We're looking at a, in a world where there's shortages every place. You go to a restaurant, and you see, they got signs out front and across, and it's global. Pick the industry, and they'll probably tell you the healthcare, the medical industry is hit. All of the industries are hit. So we've got to look and think differently. My former colleagues in the private sector that have a lot more resources, they can devote to it than what government organizations are doing, and they too are bumping up against this. But I think we're going to have to look creatively about how we do it, and maybe even, while we don't compromise, and you must have teachers in classrooms, so don't interpret what I'm about to say, but maybe there are even different ways that we could even, perhaps even, deliver some education, maybe even differently, as we think about it differently as we go forward. We're open to suggestions, ideas. If you've got some ideas or things that you think that we should be looking at that we haven't addressed, please, please let us know. Absolutely. Board members? Ms. Hawley? I'm sorry. I had my phone down, so I didn't see. Okay. And then I also, okay, Ms. Hawley, I'm sorry. Let me turn my thing over so I can see when people.
I would just say, on that point, I would like to echo some of the things that you're saying, is we're really looking at it from a research-based point of view, what makes the student outcomes better? And so there's a lot of research that says that when you have a diverse student population, having diverse instructors is really very beneficial. And so we're looking at the pass rates and the licensure for teachers of color and how we might help them to succeed, to become licensed teachers. And that's very important in producing that staffing equation that we need. In addition to which, we're doing different things to think about, leadership academies, to think about how we might talk to young people about considering a career as an educator, and also elevating the profession so that generally, within the population, people see it as a career that would be very satisfying and worthwhile. We know, we hear a lot of media now about how there's teacher burnout because of COVID and how difficult the job is. So you'll look at the blueprint, and you see in the blueprint that there are things to have the teachers have less instructional time, more planning time, again, looking to have better balance, to have the resources they need in terms of support. And all of these things, we think, will make the career choice of being an instructor more attractive.
Ms. McCusker?
One of the other things that we have discussed is looking at ways to make it not as large a financial burden for people to go into teaching, because student teaching, the practicum internships take a lot of time, and currently, it's usually unpaid time. And there are a lot of people who may currently be working as education support professionals who would like to get their certifications or successfully working with students, but they can't take 12 weeks off of work, six months unpaid, because they're supporting families. And so finding ways to make internships financially rewarding prior to teaching, or, you know, for people who are currently working in school systems with students, so trying to remove some financial barriers along the way to make teaching a little less burden some, a process to get into is another. burdenous process to get into is another thing that we have discussed. And that's something that can also be, you know, looking at higher education and trying to improve the way that we're preparing teachers, giving them more time in classrooms so that there isn't sort of a shock when you get there, to understand what teaching looks like right from early times in your teaching, growth experiences in college. So there are some other things that we're talking about too, you know, in terms of teacher prep and licensure compensation that we're hoping might be able to expand opportunity for people to be teachers.
I would like to have a few minutes.
Sure.
One thing in Washington County that I think sometimes the state board doesn't recognize is we have a large demographic area that we have to cover. Our school in Cascade, Maryland, if you leave that school and you go to our west, most west, school is 46 miles. And that's a long distance. And also, if we go to our...one of the further schools down in Brownsville, it's another 36 miles. So we have a very large demographic area that Washington County has to cover. And sometimes I think that when you're from an area, maybe Baltimore City, you think smaller and not as expanding as like we have a demographic to cover. So when we have students that have to get on buses as early as 6:00 in the morning, and they get to travel for an hour, two, or a hour and a half to school, that is a very long extended day for a three-, four-year-old student or child. And I think I just want to make you aware of what we have as an issue in this area. We're not, you know, very close, and, you know, our buses only pick up and they're there in, you know, 20, 25 minutes. So I just want you to be aware of that when you make decisions. And also, I think it's important for all school boards to have local control, you know, to allow us to continue our programs and not hold us back so much. And I think evidence today is, you know, some of the schools that we have, our Barbara Ingram School, downtown Hagerstown, our Tech High, we have a lot of magnet program schools in Washington County that I think have success rates. And it would be nice for you all to be able to stay for a week and just kind of go to some of these schools and hear, and I know you don't have that time, but, you know, we do have a lot of fantastic things that are going. And our staff, and I mean like our teachers, I mean, they really want the ability to run with these programs. And sometimes I feel like we are held back because of regulations. And I think you have...when you have teachers that are held back, they tend to maybe feel like this is not maybe their thing in life, and they move on. And I think we lose teachers because we do hold some things back. And maybe in the past, we've had teachers that have been able to have more free rein, and they've enjoyed their career. And I'm always looking for ways that we can keep our teachers and not restrict them. And so I encourage you to think about that when you're making regulations, to keep the local control for the local school boards, that we can make the decisions for our community and our staff and not hold back as much. And so, you know, kind of keep that in mind. That's the message that I would like just to bring forth, but thank you.
Do you have a couple of examples to help us make sure we understand?
Well, I think staff will probably be talking about some things tomorrow. I think that's when you're going to be talking about some issues, red tape that we haven't been able to...it seems like they raise the bar a lot when it comes to, and I'm going to...I kind of settle on a committee that...excuse me, that it seems like every time, every year we come around, there's something else that they've now got to add to the plate for maintenance. And I feel like, you know, our schools are older, and we're doing a fantastic job in keeping our schools maintained, but it just seems like we've got to jump a little higher each year with regulations. And so I'd less...you know, I hate to see staff just continually add more burden to paperwork where we would rather just be fixing things instead of having to continue to add more of a red tape. And it just...we really just want to get back to the basics. And this is areas where I think that the state board needs to review from within when our county comes to you and talks about these issues. I think you really just need to kind of hear it and not just assume that everything's okay. I think there are issues within, you know, fixing things and that we can do better. And the state board needs to hear that. It's not always, you know, the best just to keep raising the bar for everybody and let us just do what we do best and teach and run our schools and maintain our schools and help us when we do. But we have a very large population of older schools, and we're trying to maintain them the best we can. But when we have, you know, a regulation that keeps saying, "Well, now you got to do this, and now you got to do that," it hurts. And when you don't have the staff to maintain that, that is really, you know, discouraging. And again, you just keep putting more burden on someone, they're finally just going to say, "I can't do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm going to leave, and I go to another industry." I see that a lot, and, you know, we lose good people for that. So just keep that in mind, you know? And I'm sure our superintendent and the staff will be presenting some more things to you in the coming. And if you would like to hear more, I'd be more than happy to sit down with some of you at a later date and talk about these issues.
Sure, absolutely. We're open to hearing. General Sumter?
It's flashing. There you go.
I couldn't agree with you more. Having been at the local level and a small jurisdiction, even smaller than this county, some of us in the rural areas, we don't have seven, eight people in an office. There might only be one person handling that office who's trying to do all these reports. What I have found since I've gone on the state board and have access to see all the reports that the state is mandated by our legislature to report is what comes back. And my recommendation is, if I may, is that we do get local boards, along with the state MSD and the state board, to look at the regulations. And some of them can be maybe taken off the books because they were mandated from many years ago because of a problem, and maybe that problem isn't there. But take a look at it and then work with the legislature on, can we reduce some of these reports, or can we combine them, or what is it do you really want? What is the answer you're looking for? Because that's what I found out when I got to the state. We get, what is it, probably four pages of reports.
I think it's like 300 or something.
Reports mandated by the legislature. And all probably with good thoughts, but are they still there? And so we've...some of us have looked at it and talked to some of the legislators, but I think if we did it as local boards and the state board and the local superintendents and the state superintendent, it would probably let the legislature and those who want to do right by our children help us help you with making these decisions.
General Sumter. General Sumter, I couldn't agree with you more. This board has discussed it, and I can...we can clearly see that the state board understands the demands of the reports. And we recognize that accountability is good, but also prioritizing those reports, what is most valued, and perhaps some of those regulations that have been on the books that are no longer necessary, maybe a review to eliminate. Because we do have lean, effective teams in our schools and in our board of education offices, but it is quite taxing when you look at the number of reports that, in many cases, it has to be driven out of the schools, and it can be quite daunting at times. I'll also add, I know the Washington County board has embraced the blueprint, and we have a lot to be proud of where we're leading in many ways, but there are also some challenges and opportunities that best practice does bring with it. And one is, I think we agree, is we think about attracting and retaining our best teachers, and in particular at the elementary level, providing more time to plan. We agree with that, but some of the obstacles that are presented, for example, in our discussion right now, our elementary teachers teach 80% of the time with students. Look at the blueprint. We have to get to 60% in short order. For Washington County, what that means is 80 or 90 additional teachers. We have the challenge of, number one, space. Number two, as we've discussed, the teacher shortage. So how can we attract and recruit that workforce to get to that desired point where our teachers have more planning time? So we agree that, yes, our elementary teachers desperately need more planning time, but the challenge is the space and then finding additional teachers to get to that point.
General Sumter and Dr. Savine, you mentioned reporting and going along with governance and accountability. There's also the issue of plans that are required by MSD. Currently, staff's telling us that we have three plans that we need to submit. We have the reopening plan that's required by MSD, and we have an ESSA plan, and there's a blueprint plan. So, you know, when you involve stakeholders in reviewing these plans, it could get very confusing for a stakeholder when they're looking at three different things. So it would be wonderful to have one plan, a master plan. I know you all are dealing with developing a strategic plan, so if perhaps we could have a few less plans, you know, taking into consideration, as Dr. Savine said, we have...we're a lean machine here. We don't have a lot of staff, and they work hard and they do great things for us. But we could use some relief in the way of reports and plans.
Ms. Hawley? I believe it's Ms. Hawley?
Yeah, I just...I appreciate these comments and think they're really very helpful. There's two points I'd like to make. One is when there's new regulation that's proposed, it's so helpful to us to hear your comments if we are doing things that have unintended consequences by making it more difficult at the local level, and you think that there's opportunities for us to be more affirming about local control. Those are wonderful comments to hear. The second is that the public comment time I have at the beginning of every meeting, we really do consider all the comments we get. And now that we are able to hear your comments without having you travel to Baltimore, we hope we'll hear more from you. So that if you're finding things from your staff, for example, the point you just made about three different plans, please bring them forward in public comment. That three minutes packs a lot of punch in terms of bringing things to our attention where we can be responsive.
Absolutely. Ms. Morrow? I think so. That's all.
I'm going to echo some of the same things, but as...so I am the parent member on the state board. Totally understand with the stakeholders, and I feel like that is one of my ongoing issues, to try to get people to participate in plans and surveys. And everybody's like, "Didn't we just do that?" You know, it's...we do need to find ways that we are all working towards the same purpose. And in terms of the regulations, there are absolutely times where we look at things that, you know, "Why are we doing this again?" And it's coming from other legislation. And whatever we can do to help try to be proactive, to advocate in some of those ways, to make sure that we are finding a system that's going to work well for our counties and for our students, because that's ultimately where we all should be focusing on. At the same point, I will say, as...so I'm the representative for our National Association of State Boards of Education. There are times where we are advocating on a federal level as well to try to make sure that we are finding things that are going to work in each of our states, each of our counties, every district across the country. So whenever you have specifics, whether that's public comment, whether that's contacting the board office, absolutely, please send those so that we can all be on the same page in trying to make those things more effective.
So I know we talk a lot about these regulations and teacher shortages and everything. I don't know what the numbers look like. There's people far smarter than me that are able to find it. But I also wonder how many teachers are leaving the profession because of, you know, something kind of like the burnout that Mr. Stauffer was talking about. And I wonder if a lot of that burnout is caused over the last two years because of, as we have been re-entering schools, the exaggeration of the behavioral issues we've been seeing as well. And I know that is certainly not something unique to us. That's across the whole country. So are there any policies or discussions being taken...that are taking place to, you know, kind of support us at the local level, maybe expanding alternative programs, changing some policies or whatever it may be that will help? And I don't want to say remove a kid from school or the classroom because we all agree that kids need to have the opportunity to learn, but it's also worrisome when, you know, the overwhelming majority of kids are in school to learn. They actually want to learn. But, you know, for the very small fraction that are creating these disruptions, they're also encouraging some of those kids that might otherwise really want to learn to kind of go and cross over and not learn as well. And it really just expands some of these problems. So, you know, what kind of supports might be coming down the road to kind of help us with that? Because I also think that, you know, if we're able to get behaviors under control, we'll see that, you know, teachers want to teach again, the burnout won't be as high, and there'll be a lot more enthusiasm in teacher careers as it was before 2020.
And then Ms...and Dr. Green?
I'm not an expert. Oh, I'm sorry. As you either, but I'm hopeful. And the one thing that I guess that I watched at the local level and I've read what I have been able to garner is children's are...most of the children are disruptive when they are not succeeding. And I'm really...this is just me. I'm really hoping and praying that engaging pre-K, making sure by third grade, children can read, more children will be succeeding. And it's trite to say, but, you know, a rising tide floats all boats. As we get kids to where they can read, they can participate with the others and feel as equals, I think that our disciplinary issues may go down. I've never...this is the first time I've spoken on this publicly, but there are so many things that go into misbehavior in schools. And I've really looked at it. My county, we're the poorest county in the state, and that has something to do with it too. When children can't learn and they can't focus because they're hungry, they're in homes that are dysfunctional. We're not here to correct all these society problems, but education and self-worth really...it takes the disciplinary out of it. You were in the military. I was in the military. Was I the best student? Please don't talk to anyone at Saffrona Park High School in Anaromno County, because they will tell you, "I was one of those ones you wanted out of the class. I was my teacher's worst enemy." But the military and some mentors or people taking me under their wing in high school got me in the right direction, and then the Marine Corps took care of the rest. But I really believe that. It's not one thing. I think it's going to be multiple, multiple things that we have to do in the school system to bring the kids along. And hopefully, that'll... And hopefully, that'll take care of the, I know it doesn't do it immediately, but a hard, something that's hard to control maybe takes a little longer.
And sorry, just one quick point after that. You're right. I mean, obviously, when a kid is there to learn, it's probably because they're good at it. And all those things that you said, you know, with, you know, pre-K and all that, getting a kid be able to read, be able to count, you know, do all those things that a good student be able to do, that's great. But, you know, that's 13 years from now. So, you know, kind of like you said, and it's not immediate. So that's kind of where my question was going, what can we do to kind of support our teachers now? Because obviously, we can't wait for, you know, a 10-year-old kid, you know, to get proficient at reading. We're looking at probably another year or two at least before we do that. And we just don't have time for that. So I don't know if there's, like I said, anything more immediate that might be able to kind of help that out.
Let me turn.
Is it okay if I say something?
Want it?
Oh.
I think Dr. Green was next. You were.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think so.
Dr. Wilcox, you'll be after Dr. Green. Dr. Green, please.
Yes, first of all, I bring you greetings from Southern Maryland, Charles County, which is like the diametric opposite of where you all are. But I'm glad that we are able to be here. A couple of years ago, I would say probably close to about three or four years ago, I was asked to chair a task force on discipline. And I was asked to do so by Justin Harding, who at that, who was a former Washington County Board Chair. And he had said that he was getting stopped, and he still lives in Washington County, he said he was getting stopped by his community, other people in his community stopped at the store and everything, asking, what are we going to do about discipline? So when he asked me to chair that task force, one of the things that we found out after six months was that it wasn't so much the state board's policies that were affecting the discipline in the schools. Because what the state board had done, not necessarily state board, but what MSDE had done, was to come up with a guidance document. And that guidance document gave some suggestions as to what could be done for students who needed consequences or who needed to be guided in certain ways. But what we found out was that many districts were taking that guidance document and looking at it as a mandate. So when they were told to, you know, first send a child a timeout, or next send them to restorative justice circle, or something like that, that we were getting or giving or suggesting, almost like a discipline ladder of certain things that could be done. And so administrators that we talked to thought that they had to do it that way. That if a child picked up a chair and threw it at a classmate or a teacher, that the first thing they had to do on the ladder was to send them to timeout. And we were saying, oh, my goodness, no. If you've got a child who's going to pick up a chair and throw it at a teacher, that child needs to go bam. Guidance document is just that, it's guidance. You know your children a lot better than we do at the state level. And the children of Washington County are going to have different needs than the children in Charles County, than Kent County, than Worcester County. So there's so important that, yes, we can give you guidance, but it comes down to you doing exactly what your children need. And then one last thing. If anyone listens to me long enough on the board, they know that I'm a proponent for our boys. Chances are, if you look at your test scores, disaggregated by gender, you will find that at the bottom of your test scores are your boys. Many teachers don't realize, and I've learned over the years, that boys learn differently than girls. So when you have a teacher who doesn't quite understand that concept, that the way that you teach a little boy may be different than the way that you teach a girl, now speaking in generalities. But that is one of the things that if you do, if your teachers do more research, if your administrators do research, there's a lot of different experts out there that talk about boy-girl learning differences. And as General Sumter mentioned, if a little boy isn't experiencing success, if he's not getting recognition from the good things that he does, then sometimes our little boys will look for attention in negative ways. And that could be at the root of some of your discipline data as well. If you look at your discipline data, break it down to discipline referrals, suspensions, you're going to see an uptick in your boys. But when you look at the test scores, you're going to see that many of your boys are at the bottom. Something for you to investigate. Thank you.
Dr. Wilcox?
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to mention, related to the last comment, that there's a new, as part of the blueprint, there's a new Maryland consortium on coordinated community supports. It's just getting started, and it's really focusing on behavioral health and behavioral health-related challenges. And the idea of it is that it's supposed to be addressing, intended to meet the needs of students, behavioral health needs, and provide different community supports. And on that are lots of different representatives from across the state, teachers and folks from local school systems and local community schools, nonprofits, the health department, and telehealth providers, and lots of other folks, parents and students. And so you'll hear about that, I'm assuming, in the future. But I'm, that is another great place to communicate any concerns that you have in this kind of behavioral health, mental health realm to this consortium, as they will be preparing a plan to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Williams, we're approaching the end of the hour period. It's been a great conversation. We've got a lot of things to think about. We appreciate your candor. Are there any closing comments or anything that you would want to share with us?
I have nothing further, other than to say that I hope that this is the start of more conversations and opportunities such as this one, where local boards can interact and interface with our state board members.
Absolutely. And you have my contact information, so you know how to find me. I am particularly interested in these, as we look at these regulations and things. I mean, if we can start up, we've had conversations with the superintendent. He is interested in it as well. And maybe, as you said, General, if we do a coordinated effort, and we can't eliminate all 300, but maybe we can start to take some of them off the table, the ones that are oldest or the most labor-intensive, where there's really not a clear indication of value. We are definitely open to that. And we will take your comments or an advisement. You've given us a lot to think about, and we appreciate that. Senator Bates?
Yes, as you can tell, I was in the legislature. You all really need to follow what they're doing, because they get a lot of input from a lot of different groups. And you need to, you know, come forward as issues are being discussed and present, you know, your side and how you can see it play out in reality, you know, and find a few that are friends and see if you can get them to help you.
Again, thank you so very much. This is the first. We'll continue the conversation. Thank you. Thank you.
Coming in, we appreciate the joint invitation from the included Garrett County and Allegheny as well. We appreciate the opportunity. We are, this is an idea that Ms. Howley suggested a couple of years ago, was to come out of Baltimore and go around and have these meetings. And then the pandemic sort of slowed us down a bit. So you're the first that we're trying this with. And our objective is a very simple one. We have come to listen and to learn. We think that as we better understand the kinds of issues and the needs that you have, it better enables us, from a policy standpoint, in implementing policies that are necessary and policies that help support what you are doing with your school system. We see this, the blueprint, as a once-in-a-generation opportunity to do something significant for our children. So we're very excited about that. And we'd like to just have a general conversation. And we can just start with, again, if you would like to just share opportunities or challenges that your board is facing in supporting the children, your children. And also, be sure to tell us about success stories. What's working? What can we perhaps help you and help the rest of the state implement and scale? Share more information. So with that, I'd like to just turn to Vice President. I'm sorry, I'm just, I guess it's just a little tired. Please forgive me.
Well, thank you first for coming out to Western Maryland and allowing us to come down and comment on our county. We were listening to the Washington County comments from their Board of Education, and we have many of similar concerns. Most of you know, but maybe some of you don't, that we're about 100 miles west of here. So this is, while we're in Western Maryland, it does, sometimes it doesn't seem like that to us when you have to drive all that distance. But nevertheless, I really appreciate you coming up this far and giving us an opportunity to address the board on some of our issues.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I guess it's just a little tired. Please forgive me.
Well, thank you first for coming out to Western Maryland and allowing us to come down and comment on our county. We were listening to the Washington County comments from their Board of Education, and we have many similar concerns. Now, most of you know, but maybe some of you don't, that we're about 100 miles west of here. So this is, while we're in Western Maryland, sometimes it doesn't seem like that to us when you have to drive all that distance. But nevertheless, I really appreciate you coming up this far and giving us an opportunity to address the board on some of our issues. I know we're probably going to divide up some of our issues here that we're going to talk about. I sent you a written comment.
Yes, so share that with the board so they have it as well.
Okay. And so it's the same type thing that we heard in the last group. When policies are implemented and when regulations are implemented, you need to consider the counties that are small. They're not, the population is more dispersed. In Garrett County, we have one of the largest geographical areas in the state yet. And so we have to cover that county with little elementary schools. Well, there's the, you know, the problem is we're having a declining population of students for whatever reason. Some of it was COVID-related, some of it was because there's more homeschooling, some of it was because people are leaving the county. Some of it is because people that work in Garrett County sometimes live in West Virginia and Pennsylvania because the housing is cheaper. But at any rate, we are losing population. And the formulas are all based on the number of children you have in school. So we constantly are losing money. In addition to that, we have a financial cliff are going to fall off in the next couple of years because of the COVID relief funds will be dried up. So that's a big issue with us. Those children that are being supported with those COVID relief funds are probably still going to need some support after it's gone. So we certainly hope the federal government recognizes that. And everybody in the state knows that we're all in this. I'm sure Garrett County is not the only county that's having those issues. I think, but what we heard in the last session is you need to consider our rural counties when you look at policies. And opening lines of communication are so important. And I heard some great comments from the board at the last session about us making comments at your state board meetings. That's a little bit difficult because it's to make it in person, which really I think you have a bigger impact. It's a big, long way to travel for most of us. I'm used to it, but that, you know, and Jason's probably used to it. But it's hard to get down there for a two-hour meeting or a three-hour meeting. Although sometimes I'm sure your meetings last a lot longer than that.
Yeah, they generally do last.
If they're like ours, anyway. And so I think being out here and getting to know you all and being able to talk to you, not only in this format, but other formats, you know, the Mabe Conference, I got to meet some of you there. But it opens up those lines of communication. So we're not quite as intimidated by calling up the central office, talking to somebody down there. And that's important when you have a concern. It can be somewhat intimidating to stand up in front of a state audience and actually talk about some of these issues. But I think something like this is really, really important to have you come out and really listen to our concerns. I don't want to monopolize the time here, so I want to turn it over to Jason or Monica, and then I'll come back to some specific points.
Great. Thank you, Rodney, and thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak today. You know, one, we talked a little bit about successes is the use of virtual school days. If you guys have ever been to Garrett County, we get quite a bit of snow sometimes in the winter months. So we've had some success in using those, especially whenever we see that we may be out multiple days because of a large snowstorm. You know, we have six to, you know, anywhere from 12 to 14 inches coming in snow. That's often helpful for us in order to make sure we're not extending out the school year too far for our students and parents. So, you know, one, I'm not only a board member for the Garrett County Board of Education, I'm also a parent that has two students in our school system. So I get to see some of the struggles, some of the successes they have on a day-to-day basis, as well as have an open line of communication with some of our parents in our school system. And just kind of echo a little bit about what Washington County brought up earlier, is, you know, we continue to see behavioral problems in our school, as I think we do, and you guys have probably heard that from other counties, but we continue to do that. And I think a big question that we get from a lot of our parents often is, why is it that the students are, the majority of the classroom is taken out and the students left in the classroom? And what can we do to, I'm not saying that we can't do things differently and do things better based on the guidelines that you've provided, but what we can also do as a state is better educate our parents as far as what steps need to be followed as we go through those behavior models. Because although I think we have great communication between the state and the county boards, I think we also both need to work together to probably better educate the parents in the state of Maryland of what we're following and why. So we don't get kind of the, and not that I mind them, so let me start by saying that, but the repetitive questions as far as why things are happening from parent after parent after parent. And something that can be shared, maybe from the state level with the counties, and then pushed out to parents, whether it be through local PTOs or also other organizations. But, you know, I think we continue to see kids that want to learn in our school system that are impacted by children that have behavioral issues. And of course, things are much different than whenever I was in school. And as I hear my children come back or parents of other children talk about things that have happened, it's very confusing for them because the school system has changed so much since they've had their own personal experience in school. So that's one thing I had on my list. Rodney's already brought up, you know, where in a county with shrinking enrollment, that creates our challenges. If we look at our two further schools, as far as how those students may travel, I mean, to get from one end of the county to the next, you're probably looking at over 60 minutes. So it's very difficult for us. And of course, because we're a rural county, don't have the major highways as far as connecting that county for different schools. So when we look at the funding formula, oftentimes it can be difficult for us to make those decisions as a community, thinking about how long those students may be on the bus. You know, how early they may be getting on the bus and riding the bus for over an hour and a half in order to get to their school, that type of thing. If you think about a child trying to sit down and learn after they've already ridden the school bus for an hour and a half and have another hour and a half drive afterwards, that oftentimes makes it very difficult for them to sit still in school. I would probably have, I mean, after a car ride, I have difficulty sitting still after an hour and a half, right? So even though I'm used to travel, it can be more difficult as we're trying to learn. As we look at blueprint, I will say as a parent and as a board member, I'm excited of what we have in front of us for the state of Maryland in order to improve our educational program. I would like to see us all work together as far as implementation, and I think we're trying to do that. But there still seems to be a lot of unknowns, whether it be as an individual board member, as a county. And yes, we are trying to all come up with our plans, and those plans are very, very extensive. And we have a great group in Garrett County. And, you know, I want to make sure that our central office knows that we appreciate everything we do for them. But I think any guidance we can get is always helpful also. As with you all, this is kind of unknown with the blueprint. You know, it's something new for the state of Maryland. None of us have been there. And I think it's going to take us some time to perfect it, right? So although I think it has a great future ahead of it, it's going to take some time to get and see the successes that it brings to us.
Hello. Thank you also for the opportunity to be able today here to speak to you and meet you. My number one concern, a challenge, in your first question, would be what we had heard earlier is behavior. I am a parent. I have two children who have already went through school, and I have two currently still in school. Before I became on the board, I volunteered a lot in school. So I've seen a lot. I've heard a lot. So when you think of behavior, you know, we have very highly qualified teachers. We have the best curriculum, and you can have the best lesson plans, ready to start your day. And then in a moment, something happens for no reason. One student can rock your entire class. So then right away, students aren't getting the learning that they're hopeful that they're getting that day. And as Jason had said, a lot of times the students are asked to leave the classroom, and the student is getting the support that they need for the behavior. So I guess that's my one concern, a challenge, I think, is really the behavior, how it can disrupt. And then that puts, which we had heard earlier, a lot more responsibility, different things for the teacher to deal with. So you're not only there teaching, you're addressing the behavior. It just becomes very concerning, also for safety, that comes with our behavior sometimes. You know, something can be thrown, the child might not intend to, but for some reasons, throw something and hits another student. A staff might get hurt. So there's more levels beyond just the behavior. It becomes a safety issue, and that is a concern. Not only a safety issue within the classroom, but also what if the child doesn't have a good day? For whatever reason, they're placed on the school bus to go home. So there's another concern. What about the safety on the school bus? A lot of our buses in our county don't have an aide on the bus. It's just the driver. So there you are driving with 60 students. Some of the students are short. You can't really see them in the seat. I mean, you do have cameras, but, so there is another concern with the driver and the students on the bus. And you're, like I said, we have the miles between our schools. So what if you're in the middle of nowhere? You know, you have to use your radio and call for help. So again, the behavior is not just in the classroom. And then, you know, when you go on field trips or opportunities, you know, we have a Hickory Environmental Center. You know, so not only is the teacher watching your students, but then what if you have one out of control? So that, again, behavior is one of my concerns. I have a lot of notes. I'm trying to start a timeframe. Okay, one thing about the blueprint, I guess one thing that concerns me is probably a lot of other boards also. The concern is with the starting salaries for teachers $60,000. That's wonderful, and that's great, but from our standpoint with our budget, it's very concerning. It might come a time and we might have to eliminate some of our staff to be able to make it within our budget, the $60,000. So hopefully, we would get some money to support that, not just do it at our local level. And then if we would have to lose staff, then that would make our classrooms even larger, and that is very concerning. Okay, another challenge, I guess more the behavior that I was talking about was more probably our elementary. When I think of challenges in the high school, and two of my daughters I said are in high school, a big issue I think is cell phones. I mean, there is cell phone policies that we implement, but at high school, middle school and high school level, you're getting more bullying. And the issue is bullying is not actually happening during school. The children are doing it after school hours and evenings and weekend. And then they're bringing that bullying effect, it's causing an issue in school, the bullying. And then if the principal would, you bring the issue to your principal. And I can say this because I've actually had this happen. Went to the principal, the principal did a wonderful job, but when you go to research it, they wasn't actually doing the bullying part of it during the school hours, even though the situation has spiraled and it's still affecting during school. So that is a concern with cell phones and usage in the bullying that's happening with them. Another concern at high school level is vaping. You know, I've learned a lot, the devices that the children are using are things that you probably wouldn't think of, that they can purchase to have the vaping devices. And the kids are becoming very addicted to them. They said it's worse than cigarette smoke, than smoking the actual cigarette. So then the kids have to have that during the day. So that is a concern. They're trying to do it in classroom. They go to the bathrooms. They're, it's for their health also. It's not very healthy that this young of age has such an addiction to this. And then again, it becomes disruptive in the classroom.
I think that was my main things right now. I'll see if the other ones have anything else to say. Thank you.
Can I add on to some of the things Monica and Jason said about behavior? I had four children that went through the Garrett County school system. I didn't think it's that long ago, but it seems like, if I look at actually when they were in the school system, it's probably been 15 years or so ago. But, you know, in the elementary schools, I did not see the level of behavioral issues that you have right now. So it's, things are getting worse. I don't know if it's because of the, a lot of babies now are born with drug addiction problems because their mother used opioids during their, her pregnancy. We used to not have that in Garrett County. There were very limited amount of it. There's, you know, there's all this trauma that kids suffer through on certain living environments with, and that's a problem. So you have to understand that that's where they're coming from. I think our tendency is to think the school system can fix all this. And it's really not. I think it's a community issue. So I was glad to hear that there's a consortium looking at community support and what can be done, really, because it's real critical ages for a child, even pre-birth age three. And you really need to do things with that child and with that family, you know, while the children are in that age period so that when they enter school, they have a little bit of jumpstart. I know we had a, I know MSDE puts money in home visitation programs in Garrett County. We used to have Medicaid would pay for home visits, and we had some money from the Children's Office of Youth and Families. By doing that, we had a universal home visitation program. Anybody that needed visiting, no matter what their income, would get it. And we had about 100% referrals from all the doctor's offices in the county. That led us to being like second or third in the state in child readiness. Immunization rates were low, or high, very, very high, 97%. There was low birth weight babies. If you get a nurse or a family support worker in that, with that family early, you can detect a lot of these problems and try to address them. So I think the community support, the partnerships you create in your community to try to deal with this are so very important. And I hope the board doesn't, the state board doesn't lose sight of that. It's just not, it's just not the school system. It's something we have to do in our communities with all our partners in our community. And the other thing, the challenges with the blueprint that we brought up is, how do you, how do you pay these, it's not just $60,000 starting salaries. Everybody knows, you know, you pay teachers that are getting nationally certified and other $7,000. So if you, and most teachers don't start at the base level. And so it's a very expensive proposition for Garrett County to elevate these salaries. Well, if you look at the formulas and the fact that we're dropping attendance or enrollment, it's, there's just not enough money. There's, it should be a partnership between the state and the locals to actually help fund some of these things. If you're not eligible for five or six of the, for five of the categories out of six for funding, you just don't have much money to implement these programs. So I'm really concerned when we have the fiscal cliff we're going to hit, when the federal support goes away and when we start implementing some of these blueprint requirements. And a good example of that, the poverty. You know, the funding for schools that are, have a high rate of poverty. So you can get funding if you have those, but we don't have any. The poverty is distributed through all our schools. So you might have 40% farm kids in each one of our schools, but they're not eligible for the funding that's coming with the blueprint. So, and those kids need the support just like the kids in a concentration of poverty school. So, you know, those are the type of things that I think need tweaked with blueprint funding. And I'm not sure what the state board can do about that. But, you know, every county has their problems. I'm sure Baltimore City has their problems, and I'm sure, because I have two children that are teaching in Baltimore City, so I hear about their problems all the time. But I think every jurisdiction is different, but some of us are really going to be struggling with enough resources to implement some of the blueprint requirements. And in Garrett County particularly, we are really looking at consolidating some of our schools. And we just did that on the southern end of the county and do grade band realignment, go to seventh and, seventh to 12th grade and K through six. And when I was growing up, that's what we did in Garrett County and a lot of the schools. As the population increased, you opened up a middle school. Now we're thinking about closing middle school and turning the middle schools into K through six elementary school and consolidating some of the smaller schools. But when you have a huge geographical area that you're trying to cover, that's really difficult, especially when some of these schools have been embedded in the community for close to 100 years, 80 to 100 years.
Absolutely, absolutely. We are on...
Okay, let's do something.
Yes, please. Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you guys so much for your, all your great comments. The one thing that I forgot to mention last time, when we were speaking to Washington County, is that the Maryland Consortium Uncoordinated Community Supports is going to have funding attached to it. And so there's going to be a grant program. And some of the fantastic programs that you just mentioned, the home visitation program and some of those other types of innovations that you can do to address behavior challenges, bullying, vaping, and those types of concerns that you have, I think you can be starting to think about applying for some of that grant funding that will, that will be available. And so I do think that, I just wanted to make that point, because I didn't mention the funding last time, but the consortium is going to have a grant program, so the locals will be able to apply for funding. Or people from outside of the school district can apply to partner with one of the local districts, or several local districts, to help implement some type of programming that could benefit students and families in your system.
That's great to hear. But who is on the consortium? I mean, is it going to be representative of the whole state, or is it just going to be certain?
Yeah, they're representatives from the whole state, like the Sharon Hoover and the National Center for School-Based Mental Health. Their group is part of it. And there's people from various hospitals and communities that are serving on it. I haven't seen the final list, because I think they're just getting organized, and they've just had a couple meetings. And so hopefully it will be posted soon. And we could try to bring this up at one of our, in one of our meetings to try to have more information to you all about this opportunity.
Well, I think it's important to have geographical representation from around the state. And counties that have small systems, counties that have large systems, those type things need to be considered. But that's, that's really great news. If we, if there's some money attached to it, that's, we'll be applying, that's for sure.
I'll take that as an action that we will get more information about the consortium out to you, so you'll have that. And we'll just make sure also, I know the department's heavily involved, make sure the department also shares that information with the other school systems as well. Ms. Chang?
Yes, thank you for the comment. And I just take along with Dr. Wilcox about our mental health and all the need you identified in your comments. And the other thing is about the, the teachers shortage. I do believe Maryland works a little bit differently. Actually, the state Department of Labor, yeah, they can set up some apprenticeship program. Yeah, not like other states, they have to go through the federal level, but in Maryland, we can get the funding through federal, get the federal funding through our Maryland State Department of Labor, in which we can grow your own, not just gather our CTE program students, but also outside of the pool and extend it to the community. And the other thing that I was trying to kind of exploring is that teacher licensing certification. Right now, it seems that doesn't kind of cross the borderline. If I reside or have a teacher certificate from different state, when I transfer or want to teach, in Maryland State, I have to go through all the whole, almost kind of a very long and tedious process. And we are trying to thinking, you know, with NASB and the national level, to see we can set up some consortium or some sort of, my background is healthcare, we have those PEC kind of state, yeah, yeah, for our licensing, you know, requirement, and make us easier and maybe more fluid to practice in different states. So we're looking at that, and hopefully, you know, in the western Maryland. I know it kind of spread out so wide, but yet so close to neighboring states. And we're thinking, you know, that might be helpful to put heads together. Thank you.
One of the things that we are working with the Accountability Board, we're hopefully going to have a meeting, a small group meeting with them next week, and with the idea of having a, the two boards come together and really working with, with the department and the superintendent, and really talking more about, at a starting point is really, with all of the plans and, and the requirements coming up, is really around communication and coordination. How do we make sure that we're all on the same page? Let's look at ways where we can harmonize different things, or maybe, I think the blueprint is a great document, but it's a legislative document, it's not an implementation document. So we've been, the superintendent has been working very closely with the Accountability Board in helping them understand some of these, these issues. I think what we're going to have on some of this financial issues, it's probably going to be pretty tough sledding, because I would add perhaps one other thing to the list of issues that may arise, and that is the very real possibility of a, if you listen to the different pundits, of a recession sometime in 2023. That will not only hit the, impact the state revenues, but I would imagine it would also impact the county revenues as well. So again, that's something that we have to figure out and how to work through. But I think though, that if we can begin, and not being Pollyannaish or anything, because some of these issues are very real, but I think we have to be able to, we have to be able to talk, we have to be able to figure out how we're going to go forward with it. We can't let this opportunity slip through the cracks, but by the same token, we also have to live in the real world and figure out, what do we do? How do we do it? And I think it's going to require all of us to come together and figure this out as we go.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please.
No.
Yes, Ms. Rankin?
Yes. Well, Rodney was saying a minute ago, and I guess I'm pretty strong advocate for behavior, because I see how it can really impact everybody involved. When Mr. Glocke was talking about community partners, and I do agree, we need, it's good if we can all collaborate more and get the support we need. Because when I look at, and I guess you take this as a positive, being a parent on the board, I get a lot of comments from other parents at elementary, middle and high school, and they tell me things that's happened or their concerns. But I look at the behavior as two, two parts, like maybe part of it we can control, maybe, you know, kids need consistency in their life. So sometimes when they come to school, and when they learn in pre-K kindergarten, you know, you have to wait your turn, raise your hand, keep your hands to yourself. Maybe they have it, so that might be things that we can control, that they've not learned at home, some manners, respect, you know, you have your own space, you know, don't be in someone else's space, different things. And I think some of that we can address. But other parts, I think is not controlled. You know, some of these children, it might have come from possibly a decision the mother chose when she was pregnant carrying the children. So I really think that some of it, it's beyond, that's what concerns me. We, I think we need a lot more help, and I don't know who we need to get for this help. You know, the concern is, I'm seeing more and more of it, hearing more and more about it. Like, everything just keeps changing, and we have to keep changing for things that are changing that our children, our staff are facing. You know, and a wise person once told me, we can't control what happens to children when they're not in school, before hours after hours. And what Mr., I believe Mr. Sumter, or someone had said earlier when we was watching the other meeting, is you're absolutely right. Sometimes children might not get meals at night. So, you know, we can provide them a good meal during the day. In our county, they have these backpacks. The kids can take a backpack home on the weekend, and it's got meals to carry them through, through the weekend, you know. But then sometimes you have children come to school and they're not learning, not because they don't want to learn, but they're incapable because they was up all night. They was somewhere or something was happening, they didn't get no sleep. So they come to school and they went to sleep. You know, you might have kids come to school in the same clothes they wore yesterday. I mean, there's just so many different scenarios. So then, and I'm hearing too, in Garrett County, some kids possibly could be placed in foster homes, but I think that we're running out of, there's not as many foster families, you know. So a concern is, what else can we do? I wonder, do we need to bring orphanages back? You know, at least you know that they're taken care of, they're getting what they need. I mean, I don't know the answer, but I'm starting to, I look outside the box, as you would say. What else can we do? I don't think we have enough foster care, and that's, you know, a person's decision if it works or doesn't work for the family, and I understand that. I just think that, what else can we do? I think we need another thing beyond foster care, if we need, if children need to be removed from the house for what's best. And then one more thing on behavior, is when a child or multiple children might be having outbursts in the classroom, whether it's verbal, throwing something. You're not only impacting the student's learning, but you're also impacting the children's mental capacity, the other students. Then some of the children think that they need to act out, or they don't know how to, they used to say to my children when they were younger, like, try to debug. If there's a situation going on around you, like you're there and you focus on what you're to do. Well, some children can't, and that's okay. So they can't focus on trying to learn, block out what's going on. They focus on the situation that's happening, and then it just kind of takes over them. And then that child then wants to come home and act out, and then, yeah. So it, so we really could use more maybe counselors too, at all different levels for children that have someone to talk to. I mean, we have some, but when your budget is very limited, the amount of money that you can have, I think that's important. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Van Seckel?
Thank you.
And then Ms. McCusker?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, when you talk about, you know, we can only control kind of what's happening during the school day. I think that's one of the really important things about the community connections and community wraparound services. I think probably though, in a, in a geographically spread out community, in a smaller community like Garrett, you probably see the value of that, but find it is a little bit more difficult to get those wraparound services where they're needed, needed most. And that might be one of the challenges, is, you know, that, that we may be able to find ways to help get those services in this spread out area to where they need to be. But you're right, there's only so much that we can affect during the school day. And that's the beauty of these wraparound community services, because they can provide some things outside of the school day that may help us to manage the school day, the school day better. And the need for more counseling and social emotional supports in schools that aren't placed onto the plates of teachers, but placed onto the plates of people who are trained to handle that is really important. But again, we face the barrier of cost and of human resources in finding those people. So, you know, finding innovative ways to find those people and to get those services into your school is, is the big challenge, and we need to partner to figure out that challenge. But thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to tap on it that I learned from other county that have a model called school-based kind of health center. So that students have certain identify issues, their parents might want to register their student in certain schools, which has this wonderful kind of service, because some kids might need more frequent office visits. And through that model, that students can be served while during the school day. And then it would be virtually, the parents kind of come on site, and there is like a school nurse or hired practitioners at the school level. And so they can do the telemedicine kind of visit, which I think the model might work and solve some problem instead of the resource shortage, not understaffed, or not enough resources right there. And they can cover a wider kind of populations in certain pockets of your county, since you are spreading out more than others.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's important. About the community, about the school-based health centers, we have to be innovative in how we do that in Garrett County, because if you open up a center, there's a lot of federal regulations on, and state regulations on how, you know, the people that you serve, how, how available you have to be to off-hour emergencies and all those type things. So that's, that's really difficult with the level of practitioners we have in Garrett County also. So, but we, but I think you're totally right. You need to provide some of those services in the school. And I know several of our local physicians and the health department through the Health Planning Council, and, and the schools are looking at probably bringing some practitioners into the schools to actually work with the kids. You know, Garrett County has the lowest amount of, the smallest amount of children, adolescents that are, that have been seen in the last year for, for an encounter with a physician. So this is one way that you might be able to counter that. They could actually see that physician in, in the school. So, but I think your, your idea is right. You have, if you can't actually do the health center in the school, you could, you could probably come up with some, some ways to do it that are a little bit outside of the box on that.
Yeah, and definitely partner up with the local health department. I think that's the kind of first step. Yeah. And I know some counties, they of course partner up with the local health department and then grow their program that way, you know, whatever practice or some larger practice right at the community level. Yeah, they would like to help on once they build up the, the volume. Yeah. So I think it takes a couple of months or years to grow into the program, but at least that's a great start.
Also, in Garrett County, we have sort of a unique system where, I'm not sure it's unique, but the health department licensed social workers actually do counseling in the schools, and some of our addiction counselors actually do. The health department's addiction counselors actually go out to the schools and provide that service. And I think there's a mental health provider, or there, there was in the past assigned to every school. And so that's a wonderful way to provide mental health services to the children. Now we're, the school system's starting to hire counselors on their own to try to do some of those things, but it's expensive. Jason?
Yes, Mr.? Thank you. Just to follow up that, and then I'll just kind of switch gears a bit. You know, of course, like many rural areas, when people mention telemedicine, remember we do have an internet issue in rural America, so it's not as easily accessible for a lot of our families to actually do telemedicine because of the internet service that's not available. Of course, we have it at our schools. We could continue it with a school-based program, but as far as offering those services, once those families get home, can often be difficult if they're in areas that don't have high-speed internet. Switching gears here a little bit, as we, you know, we're talking about blueprint, you know, and again, it was a legal document, so, you know, I may have some misconception here, but I love the fact that we're preparing kids for college readiness, and we're preparing kids for certification programs. I guess my question is, what I didn't see in the plan as we move forward is, are we increasing counseling to make students aware of college choices or certification choices after high school? Because we can prepare them all we want, but if they can't afford it, and we can't counsel them in the right direction as far as what their choices are, then we may have failed them at that point, right? So if we can prepare them, but not, you know, get them across the finish line for high school, but not get them into a college. So I didn't see that kind of discussed in the plan, except for some small fractions as far as some of the additional counseling is provided. But as a state, I think we could probably do a little bit better as far as making sure that they understand the options they have after high school, based on what they've completed with the blueprint.
I think you'll see that one of the things we're going to do tomorrow is to roll out the first phase of the strategy, and you'll see that we have taken a stab at that. Well, I'm not sure that we've fully answered the question, but I think we're trying to move in that direction to give children more information earlier in middle school, so that they can make more informed decisions. Obviously, to do that, you've got to have qualified people, adults, there to offer that advice. So you'll see that we're, we're trying to do, we're trying to, to address that. And... So you'll see that we're, we're trying to do, we're trying to, to address that, and we definitely would welcome your feedback on how well we've done, if there's still some gaps as you look at that. What we'll roll out tomorrow is the, sort of the overall strategies and mission and the like, but what you will also see after the first of the year is, we envision a very intensive engagement period with the local school system stakeholders to help us figure out, okay, if this is where we're going, then what does this look like in Garrett? What does this look like in Washington? What would it look like in Baltimore? So we're gonna, so the plan is to have a more detailed engagement period that will run, I think from about, if I'm remembering correctly, from about February till, till, till June of that detailed discussion, so that we as a, because the goal is that we as the, as a state can stand behind this, and, but we know we can't do it without your help and your input, because we're doing the best we can. The draft of the Blueprint did the best they could do, but what we really need now are the people that are involved with actually implementing, to be able to look at this and help us figure out, how do we actually advance it? So that's what we'll be doing tomorrow, is to roll out of the initial, and in, in the document, you'll see a, a graphic and a, and a discussion about next steps, but really what, to make this work, it really comes down to this engagement, and giving you an opportunity to comment, and then to figure out, again, when you look at what's there, then what does this look like in Garrett? So getting your input, because we know that it's not going to look the same in every, in every district. There's certain basic things that we're trying to do, we're trying to set, get to certain levels of performance and the like, but getting there and how it's done will probably be, will definitely be different by, by school system. So we definitely need your help in figuring that out. You've laid out some great issues, some of these we'll be able to deal with quickly, some of them are just hard issues that we just got to think about. I mean, on the issue of the funding, that's going to be a hard issue. I'm not saying it's impossible, we've got to figure this out, and figure out how we go forward. And on the behavioral, we hear you, and I'm going to go back to some of what Dr. Green said, maybe part of what we need to do is to go back and revisit, what are the options and that locals have, and maybe again, look at, in the post-COVID environment, are there some gaps in what we came up with? You know, Dr. Green, a few years ago, maybe there's some new issues of whatever that come out of COVID related to social emotional learning and the like, and try to figure out, are there gaps, are there areas where we need to look at this? But all of the frontline organizations, teachers were never hired to be social workers. I used to be a cop. We was, I was sworn in 50 years ago. That's quite all right. I was a cop. But, thank you, thank you, Senator Bates, I knew you would. But, but back then, you know, we had social emotional issues, I don't think to the extent we have it today, but the infrastructure was just different. We could take, the laws have changed and, and should have changed, but we were able to, as law enforcement, we saw someone that was having social emotional problems, we could take them to a mental health facility. Because we weren't prepared and trained to deal with that. Now, what you see on the front end is law enforcement now trying to deal with mental health issues, teachers trying to deal with mental health issues. So maybe we just, and, and we'll look at the consortium, but maybe this is an area where we just need to just take another look at it and see whether there's a need to update maybe what was done a few years ago. I don't know, but I, just saying that these, we haven't, some of it'll be easy, some of it's going to take some time to try to figure out what to do, and so we will not forget about it. We just don't, as you would expect at this point, we just don't have a, a really good solid answer.
I think, you know, we also have to recognize that one size doesn't always fit all, that we may want certain outcomes, but you may have to go at it differently from different direction, from different places. We need to give you all that flexibility, I think, you know, here's the goal, you know, you determine what football plays you're going to do to get there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We certainly understand what you're up against with the legislative document, the Blueprint, and trying to implement that, and, and so, I know the State Board's kind of limited too on, on what they can do, but I really appreciate you listening to our concerns, and I think as you move around the state, you're going to hear the same things in a lot, a lot of areas that we've told you today. So I really appreciate you coming out and, and giving us a chance to, to tell you about our concerns, and I think just, just awareness on your, your part is going to be helpful.
Yes, thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Likewise, likewise.
Thank you, it gave us this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
Our time's up, right? Isn't that what you were about to say, Mr. Ross?
Well, you have our contact information, so again, as you see things, if you, if you see something that we're doing that's making you guys crazy, please reach out and let us know, because that is not our intent, so please feel free, and you're not going to hurt our feelings by coming to us and pointing out issues, because what we're trying to do is the same thing you're trying to do, educate our children to the best extent possible.
Well, as a result of this type meeting, I think we'll all feel more free to come to you about certain issues, so thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
And just one little comment, our public comment before our regular monthly board meeting, you can do it virtually, so you don't need to drive.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Whether you're in person or virtually, we take all of those comments into account. We'll talk about them, and we'll sort of say, everybody, people are saying these issues, and we'll then look at them ourselves, and we'll engage the superintendent in terms of trying to figure out what, what's happening here or there. So we do pay attention to that quite a bit.
Yeah, Zoom's wonderful, isn't it?
Yes, it is. One of the benefits, I guess, of the COVID is that we're doing that.
Thanks again.
Thank you, thank you.
We're to Allegheny County now.
Concept. We know there's been a ton of work done behind the scenes to make this work, and we are very, very appreciative. This is part of, again, of our desire to have an ongoing conversation with you. We're all very excited about the once-in-a-generation opportunity to execute or implement the Blueprint. And we are, we have enough humility to recognize, we can't do it ourselves, and we don't have all the solutions, and we really want to continue the dialogue. We would really appreciate just an informal conversation, we put some suggested questions out there, we don't have to hit every one of those questions, we've come to listen and to learn, because we believe that if, as we better understand your needs, the challenges you're facing, understand your successes, and I think it helps us in terms of being able to develop education policy that makes sense. We recognize that there is no one-size-fits-all, so understanding the different school systems, the geographies, the challenges that they're facing, I think strengthens and helps us. Please feel free at, even after today, you have our contact information, if we're doing things that are making you crazy, please let us know, that is not our intent, so let us know, we're open to hear, we're open, as we have this conversation, please feel free to share with us if there are things that the State Board isn't doing or could do better to support you, please feel free to share that, you're not, this is family. If we can't talk honestly and openly, then we're not going to have the kind of success that we need to have to benefit our children. So with that, I'd like to just turn it over to President Bender to share whatever, however you'd like to go forward, we're more than willing to hear what you have to say. And, and don't be, we've gotten, people have identified issues, properly so that, I don't know how you solve, but I think at least getting them out on the table, so that we can at least talk about, maybe we can figure out a way to sort of chip away at some of these issues, but let's just have the conversation and see where it goes. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for having us, put me right on the spot, I wasn't prepared for that. I do want to say, so we have Mr. Farrell with us, and also Ms. Frank and Mrs. Fraley, I think somewhere lost in the shuffle last week, they thought there was only two of us coming, but we have four of our five board members here.
Great.
So I actually wanted to share some good news first, so I came on to our board during COVID, when everything was fully shut down, so I have no board experience prior to COVID. And to me, I feel like things are really rolling, we're doing really well at the moment, obviously, there's always things to do better at, but with that being the only experience I have, I think our county's doing fantastic, and there's a lot of good things happening. So I wanted to touch on, because this kind of relates to the Blueprint, that we are in the process, almost finished, we just put in an early childhood pre-K center, in addition to what we already had in place in our very western end of our county at Westmar. It's in Westmar Middle School, but as a division that they added in there. So that's some good news, I thought was important to point out, we're a little bit ahead of the game there with Blueprint, adding that in right away. We're a little bit ahead of the game there with blueprint, adding that in right away. And I honestly didn't have any major concerns. I was going to kind of wait and see where the dialogue took us today. I didn't come in with complaints ready to bash anyone, so that's good news, right? So, with that, if anybody else has anything they want to start with, it's all you, whoever.
Yes. Okay.
Loud enough. They can hear me through the screen. I'm Deb Frank and I'm ending my term on the Board of Ed and I'm, I'm sad about that because I was, you know, I preceded Crystal, so I got to see a couple of years pre-COVID and then managing through COVID. I think an important point was to bring up is that Allegheny, despite our tiny size, we're in a city of less than 19,000 and a county of less than 70,000. So, we're very small, but we were probably the first county to get our students back face to face. You know, through the work of our superintendent, this board, we were able to sort of manage that, I think, better than the larger counties could. So, that was a plus for us that we were so small. But on, on the sort of negative side of that, our smallness is going to present extraordinary challenges and probably Rodney and the Garrett group had the same concerns with a lot of the pillars in the blueprint. We have difficulty filling teacher positions and, and a significant component of the blueprint is to add more teachers. So, beyond sort of the, the funding aspect, I have concerns about our inability to attract folks. You know, I share Mr. Crawford's enthusiasm about the blueprint. That's the other thing that makes me sad about leaving because this is the most exciting thing that's happened in Maryland education forever. And I would have loved to have been involved in that. But, I think, you know, having this kind of face-to-face dialogue is outstanding and I, I would love that to happen for the future board, Allegheny's future board down the road because I think you can only do so much in emails, you know, and, and you all get bombarded with them. We hate sending them. It's much better to just sit in a room face to face. So, you know, my, my takeaway from today, I'm excited this is happening. I think this should be on a regular schedule, a quarterly rotational schedule for all of you. Because we, to some degree, and understandably so, we're so small that you tend to feel forgotten when you're small. But as I just mentioned, we were able to accomplish stuff being so small. So, those are my contributions. Thank you all for today. I'm sorry, Bob.
We got it. We got it. I also would like to thank you for having us. I agree with Deb and with Crystal. This is a, you know, a very good opportunity to sit and have a dialogue with you all and to get things out and find out where the problems are and how we can fix it and how we can make things better. And I think that's what we're all here all about, trying to make things better for the school system and the students and the employees. So, I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Over here.
Nope, there you go. You just have to hold it for a second.
You can move it. Yeah, it's for our listeners.
Hi. My name's Tammy Fraley. I'm in my second term on the board and I serve as, with Maryland's Association of Boards of Education. So, you've seen my name maybe before. I'm second immediate past president now, I guess, as of October. But I've served with Mabe the whole time that I served on Allegheny County Board of Education. And it was a first for, from a while ago. And I think I kind of lucked out because of COVID because it made it to where I could do things remotely. My real job is a business system analyst on projects that are in DC, but I've worked from home from, my son's 16, so 16 years I've been able to work from home doing that job in Allegheny County, which, you know, a lot of times people said that we don't have internet. How do you, you know, how do you do that? But we do have internet in certain spaces and I am able to use my experience of using the internet to communicate a lot with a lot of different people. And I think that's one thing we did learn from COVID is that we can't get everybody by a computer. Everyone thought, well, boom, just turn it on and everybody just start working on computers. And although I've done it my, you know, my whole time there, there was a lot of places within our county that don't even have cell service, much less internet. And so, that was the first, the first year I was there, and we've been doing that for the six years, was to try to get broadband internet in Allegheny County. And I know Garrett County has the same thing and then the Eastern Shore does too. And I think that's one of the things that the state, at a state level, could help, that each individual county by themselves can only do so much when it comes to a utility like that. It needs to be treated like a utility. We, we feed our children. We make sure that they get to school, but we're not giving them the tools to be able to succeed. And one thing is going to be technology, like it or not, COVID or not COVID, technology is, is the wave of the future. And in Allegheny County, we had a, we were one of the first ones to do the program, P-Tech. The P-Tech program. We did the P-Tech program and I think we're in the third or fourth year of that and we've had individuals that have, you know, graduated from high school and have an associate's degree when they came out. And we also, I always tell this because my son's in it, we have a Chinese immersion program, which, when that first came up, and he's in seventh grade, so it was seven years ago, or eight years ago, when that first came up, everybody thought, how are you going to do that in Allegheny County, right? Like, how are you going to have a program for a different language than, and have it work through the entire process? And with the state's help at that time, we were able to utilize resources that the administrator at the time was able to utilize resources through the state and through MSD to get that program in place. And that program has thrived and at this point, what grade are they in, seven years? They're, they're in, they're in high school now and they're about to, before COVID, they went on trips, like they went to China, which was so cool. And my son was one year away from getting to go on that trip when COVID hit. But they had a trip where they had a sister school in China where they would go and, and that was part of the learning experience. And now they're just having to do it a little bit differently. But that in itself is a use of technology too, right? Because obviously, we don't have a whole lot of native speaking Mandarin Chinese in Allegheny County. We did have enough because that was part of the program when it started. It was grant funded when it started. It's no longer that, but we had that. So, I think the state could help in looking at those innovative programs in all areas and trying to help those areas, especially those that are smaller, to get to those grants. Part of the blueprint, I, I'm serving on the, make sure I say the right name, Maryland Consortium of Coordinated Community Supports as part of Mabe. And that, part of that is to make sure that there's a community support, you know, within 45 minutes that they can get to, to children. I'm representing Mabe, so the whole state, but at the same time, I represent Allegheny County to say this, here's another example of, we don't have all of those resources easily available within a certain timeframe because just of our pure size of our county. I don't know what the size is. I just know it's large that it takes, when we were going through election cycles, I know it takes two or three hours to go from one side of the county to the other just to do things. So, there's not a lot of supports that way and I know that the State Board has the regional groups that were doing that, but even from a regional perspective, the western region is widespread. So, one regional support may not be enough for the western region where one regional support in Baltimore County may be because it's all right there and it's easier to get to. So, I think utilizing their resources that you have at the state level to provide input to the smaller counties and then also utilizing technology and helping to build that with the state, right? Because I mean, the state really is, federal government for that matter, is going to have to come in and, and help that become a utility just like we have electricity. And then the last thing I would want to say is that you need to continue this with the local boards because, serving on Mabe, I know that there are some local boards don't get information like you would think you would get. You know, you're talking to superintendents and not always does a superintendent get the information to all board members. And that's just because of how the, sometimes the politics, sometimes just the size of the board or what the boards are working on or their board members' regular jobs. You know, not every board member can spend 60 to 80 hours a week doing things. So, it's coming up with a communication plan that gets that information in layman's terms. Working on this consortium, one of the first things I saw was, the first thing we did was try to come up with questions to ask about mental health. And one of the first things was, we had a bunch of mental health social worker people and they were, their questions were like data-driven questions and they used big words, right? And, and the first thing somebody said is, you're going to be asking parents about mental health and you're using these words that, I mean, it was just a big page of words. And they said, you're right. We need to, you know, not dumb it down, but dumb it down, right? Like bring it down to that level where people understand it. And a lot of times from the State Board, what we get, like the blueprint, you just get this big huge binder of information, right? And that's hard to digest. And the blueprint's a little bit different that you got the blueprint coordinators that were able to come in and, and they're learning and that's helpful, right? So that there's one person that we can go to. But again, just remember that not all boards are, are able, speak to each other all at the same time and there's some, some division between boards. So, when you think you're talking to the local boards, you may need to take it down a level of, just make sure it's getting communicated out.
I just wanted to add something really quickly. I'm sorry. We'll just keep going back and forth this way. How about that? And it just reminded me when Tammy was mentioning this. I go on as a board member, the MSD site all the time and I access all the blueprint information and there's copious amounts, wonderful, but that, that keeps us knowledgeable about what's going on. The public doesn't have a clue. And I understand that it's probably the primary responsibility of each local board to get that out to their public, but even in our case, unless it hits the newspaper, we get nobody, you know, a handful of people coming to our board meetings or watching them online. I think it might help everybody if you all would put something out in the media in all these different areas on a regular basis, not a one giant, this is the blueprint and these are the pillars and all of that. But maybe feature something once a month in all the local media, like the newspapers, coming from your, you and not us. It's very difficult. I can't call the newspaper and say, hey, you know, run an article on the blueprint. They won't do that unless there's some controversy at a board meeting. They don't barely report on that. So, it'd be really helpful because I feel comfortable with blueprint information and we do try to bring it up to some degree at each board meeting, but I know the public has no idea what anybody's talking about. And it is, it is a once in a lifetime opportunity and we should be celebrating this opportunity far and wide. So, I think maybe PR and marketing from your area would be really helpful with that. You were talking about grants for the Chinese immersion program. I know, I'm recently retired from Allegheny College of Maryland. I was a professor in hospitality management and very easily secured grants from MSD in innovation and in part of a reserve fund grant. The grant application stuff is really super easy. I've never seen easier grant applications, but I think people don't know those things are out there. And it was critical for me, I got two sizable grants, to partner with the secondary schools because that is a cornerstone of all of blueprint anyway. So, I was able to coordinate getting a catering van and, and start doing catering education across the high school and the college level. We started beer, a brewing production program. So, we're partnering with our VOTEC score, Career Center, but I think people don't realize that those opportunities are out there. You know, I did because I work at a college and we're always looking for grants, but I think that's a very easy piece of information to get out to the public.
Okay. You may want time to respond to all of that, but just to throw in real quick, what Ms. Fraley touched on with technology and wifi and internet connection. My question for you all is, what resources do you have there? Has that been brought up to you before? I'm sure you're aware Garrett and Allegheny really have a problem with internet connection, but is it something that you get information on or that you're able to rally and lobby behind us at the state level to get more resources? Because there's been companies come in and promise things and it kind of fizzles out once they drive up and actually see the areas and how hard it's going to be to get something there. So, are you able to help with that at all and getting any attention to that type of thing? Or where, you know, has that been brought up to you before directly?
It's probably been more than a year. I think it was when, when Dr. Salmon was still here, we had the governors, the governor has a group that, that's responsible for broadband. We had them come in and share the plans, but it's been a while. So, maybe we need to bring them back. On something like that, our contribution is probably more advocacy because we don't own any of that, but we sure can help in terms of advocating. So, I made a note here about going back to that group and having them give us an update because I know they were doing their best they could and what they outlined seemed to be a reasonable way forward. I'm, I'm not totally surprised, but I am a little surprised I've heard from you and I've heard from some of the other more rural counties that we still have more of a broadband issue than I thought we would have at this point. General Sumter.
It's Somerset County, same thing, especially with Smith Island and everything. And you've got the problem, we're at least flat, the mountains and all the forests eat up the RF anyway, even if you're trying to do a hotspot. But I think it was not Delmar for power, but Chop Tank. It's a co-op. And I think they worked with the broadband office, got some money and they are now doing a survey in Somerset County to the underserved areas for broadband internet. And they are putting it in a much greater part of the county, but I will tell you, it's still not going to cover every child in every part of the county. One of the areas where I, I'm at, where you know, it's hard to get ahold of me sometimes when, when you're trying to communicate. Chip knows where it is out on Pokes Road. It's, it doesn't even have a cable anywhere close to it. And so, there are a lot of holes in a lot of jurisdictions. It's Worcester County, it's Wycomico, also parts of Dorchester. So, yeah, we need to take another look at. Everybody was on it at the beginning of the pandemic, but like anything else, it goes by the wayside. But you might want to at least start with your county, looking at the county commissioners, talking to some of the, the folks that already have wires hanging. Most people have electric and so the electrical co-op has the poles, have the infrastructure. So, they're the perfect people to, to partner with.
I believe there's also supposed to be federal money to support that as well because I feel like that was one of the things, wasn't that something that came up at the ASB Legislative Conference?
I think it goes to the governor.
So, something, does it all, it all goes through the same governors? Yeah. Yeah, if we can get an update, that'd be great.
And then if you get that meeting or update, if you could let us know, maybe what I said, that would be good. Like you mentioned with cell phones, so on the way down here, we used hotspots during the pandemic for the kids that didn't have, but it's so rural that the cell phones don't work everywhere. And just on my way down, I have US Cellular, they're redoing the towers for 5G. I've dropped calls six or seven times within an hour. You can't even carry a phone conversation. So, the hotspots in most of those places don't work more than a few minutes either. So, yes, if you get an update, we don't work more than a few minutes either. So yes, if you get an update, we would appreciate maybe if there's any information to pass along. Thank you.
We'll request that. When we have it locked down, we'll let you know. But most likely, it will be after the first of the calendar year. But we will definitely follow up.
Dr. Miller-McCarthy?
So I'm intrigued. It's so wonderful that you have pre-K programs starting per, per the blueprint. But you also said that there were some challenges which are, you know, attracting teachers, filling teacher positions. I'm really curious about what other challenges might you have because you're so small relative to the blueprint? Because I think that's important for the board to know. If there's anything else that you can think of. You know, being a small county is great for many respects, but, but sometimes it's, it's a challenge. So if there's anything that you could think of would be helpful.
And it's not just teaching positions. We haven't been able to fill any, bus drivers. One accomplishment that I'm extraordinarily proud of in the last few years is we've added a significant number of social workers and mental health counselors to our system. Prior to when I served on the board, the psychologists that were in the system did nothing but learning disability testing. There was no, any other service other than that. And in a small community, not just small, poor, you know, the, the more those folks that we can have in the system to not only connect resources to families, but even, you know, like broadband issues. And, and, you know, we were able to get Chromebooks in everybody's hands. But with the help of our IT person in the system, getting these hotspots out in the community. So, you know, those positions are, I'm now seeing even more necessary than I believed. I would also add that we struggle. And I can't say whether there's a direct correlation to this or not. But we struggle with providing the amount of special education services that we should. We have so many students who have IEPs and we plan and do all of that. But when you have time constraints and staffing constraints, I think we're missing the follow-through on some of those plans. So staffing, you know, has the whole sort of carryover challenges in other areas. But I've noticed that in the last few years in particular. I mean, special needs students were, were having issues across the state, across the country with pandemic and not being able to do things virtually. But I think pre-pandemic, we were struggling with that too, because our community's so small. And we don't have the level of resources. You know, people think about small counties, okay, you've just a handful of schools where we have a ton. We don't even have the local resources, you know, to, to handle some things. You know, in the bigger metropolitan areas, you can redirect or direct students to a number of different possible assistance agencies and, and we have handfuls. So having the social workers and mental health counselors in our system has been a big plus.
Yes, Ms. Morrow?
So one of the things that we've heard, we heard from Garrett today and then in some of my discussions with Karen on the Eastern Shore, I've heard similar things about declining enrollment for a variety of, of reasons. Is that something that Allegheny is, is dealing with as well?
The numbers before COVID, how many? Yeah.
In 2000, I want to say 2008 or 2009, so.
It's just right under eight now.
Yeah, it's around 8,000 right now. We've lost every industry in our community. You know, we were at one point the second largest city in the state of Maryland, which is just baffling to me. And then right now we have 19,000 people in Cumberland proper and 70, in the 70,000 in the county. So we've lost all the major employers and major industries. Cumberland is trying to develop sort of a rebirth as an artist community and tourism. We've always been heavy in tourism. But that's expected to grow as we redevelop our downtown area and water the canal and build up a whole river, not a Riverwalk. I think of San Antonio.
Riverwalk is what they're going for.
Yeah. So, you know, I, and I, and frankly, the pandemic may have helped us. You know, people could figure out they didn't have to be in an office. And why not live in a place that you have a bigger house for less money and you have pretty mountains around you. So we're getting a gradual influx of people from the city who can do remote work. So all projections that I've heard is where we are now is about the bottom and we're, we're going to be up again.
And our county as a whole has declined. So we're at 70,000 and that's declined from, I don't know what the highest was, about 100,000 a few decades ago. So over time, you know, you're down 30,000 people. You're down that many children. So hopefully up from here, like Deb said.
Is it okay if I ask a question?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, yes. I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Dr. Wilcox?
I just, I think it's Dr. Franken who said this about the increasing the number of social workers. And I was just curious if, how you did that? Was that through billing through Medicaid or another way to be able to reimburse people for their time and to be able to hire more people? Because I know Superintendent Chowery is really interested in thinking about ways to bill Medicaid for mental health and other types of health services in the schools. Because that might help with having more personnel in those areas if you can kind of recover their salary costs and so forth. And so I'm sorry if I got your name wrong, but I just.
You gave me a promotion though. I'm not a doctor. I don't know that we're doing that right now. You know, we built that into our system and these are school system employees. Do you know? Are you aware of?
So I know in the past, we had, the Health Department would come in and do some of the counseling onsite, which would be that billing of Medicaid and Medicare. But this was truly luck of the draw that we have a fund balance that allowed us to put out, you know, job openings. And we honestly didn't think we would get it. Many people apply, to be honest. I mean, it was one of those things that we had enough money that we put out and said, you know, how many ever it was, six, I think, or something, thinking that we would only get three, right? But we got enough people to apply that we ended up getting nine, right? So it was more pure luck really on the, than being available and being the right resources. And much like she said, on, from just a services perspective, many of our people in our county will go to Morgantown, West Virginia, or come down to Hagerstown to visit a doctor even, right? So there's, it's a lot of, it seems like that we lucked out with this money came at the right time. It was COVID time. People had moved that way and were more willing to be that way because, and the opening was there. So we haven't had an issue of, of funding for mental health. It was more of getting the resources available, people, resources available to, to do the work. Like Deb said, that we had people that were, every day, I forget what the rate share was, but it was really bad. Like 300, 400 kids to one. Yeah, you know what.
Yeah. Like the, the recommendation for, from the psychiatric association and all those related groups is that you have mental health counselors at the, at the minimum, one per 750 students. When we started really promoting this and encouraging it, we were probably at one at 1,500 or 1,700 students. So now we're down to about one and one for 400. And what worked best for us, and I, I would think this would work in every other county too, is the social workers be housed in the elementary schools and the mental health counselors be housed at the middle and high schools. Because, you know, a third grader needs food and clothes and they need, their family needs to know where to get those things. It's the older kids who, who could benefit best from individualized counseling and, and connection to outside counseling services. So that has worked extremely well in, in that arrangement. So we have, our schools are small, but we'll have one social worker cover two elementary schools and alternate days. And so they're always available and accessible to the students and they're in the school. So the stigma about needing services or needing counseling is, is virtually gone. So yeah, we were able to, as Tammy pointed out, fund it through some diligent work on the, on the behalf of our superintendent. We really went all the way up to, I think we have nine. We had a, two or three, and then we added seven more positions. We also added a significant number of SROs and school security personnel in our system. So at this point in time, almost all of our schools have full coverage. So if there's any one bright spot in COVID, it was the funding was coming into school systems that had never seen that level of funding before. And we could manipulate or move that money around to where we felt it was truly needed. And school safety was that one area and mental health accessibility was the other.
Thank you. Are those funds going to dry up soon? Because are they all pandemic relief funds? And will, I'm assuming they'll be drying up. And could there be an advantage to being able to bill for the services of those providers in order to sustain them?
And that's actually a good thought, especially in the larger systems. In ours, because it's fairly small, we have built them into our budget. They aren't going away because of temporary funding. We moved other things around to allow coverage of that. But I, I hadn't even considered what you said. And I think that's a really interesting take or an option for especially larger school systems to be able to bill for those services onsite. You know, because of push everywhere and even in the blueprint, community schools are referenced and, and the need for having multiple services for the community centered around the schools themselves. So I just see this improving and getting so much better through blueprint funding and planning down the road. And, and that's a good point about billing.
Ms. McCusker?
Another highlight in addition to the school security employees, we've, our buildings are older, very well maintained though. We've added some security vegetables entrances into the school along with the SROs. And I think that's good for the public to hear. Most recently, two of the middle schools. So before, when you would get buzzed in, you're just there and you can go right on into the rest of the school. So they've changed it now. You're buzzed in, the secretary is there behind the glass, kind of like out front here. Then she has to allow you into the rest of the school. And the SSE is seated there some of the day. So that's another part of that, that I'm hoping as the years continue here, each school, we can continue each year to add another one of those in addition to what we've been doing.
Question was, have you gotten any pushback from people in the community about the SROs? Our previous, current county executive had them taken out of our schools. But I know there's some parents that are kind of concerned about that. So do you get any pushback?
Parents is the other way. I think we've gotten more praise from the parents and the students and the teachers, especially seems like the teachers are very, very happy with the security officers and SROs in the schools. They're working with the kids. They're, they're doing all kinds of different stuff with the students and the teachers. And, and I, I think we've gotten a lot of praise for it. I haven't heard any negative yet. So I think that's a good thing.
I was just curious because I've heard about it from my community that there was some pushback. But I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
And just to add to that a little bit, my husband was a school resource officer in Maryland for 13 years. He's now in West Virginia. But one of the parts of why in Allegheny County it seems to have worked is whether they're an SRO or an SSE, which is our school security employees, they're trained as if they're an SRO. So they, they go through the same training that an SRO does. And they are clearly understand their role when it comes to discipline. So part of the issues that I've heard at the state level of different areas that have concerns about SROs, it has to do with, a lot of times with the discipline actions and their rest powers, right? Of, in the school to prison pipeline kind of concept. But in, in our county, from the very beginning, when we didn't have as many, they've always been trained at that level. And so they've never, we've never had the, there are some that would say that we have a school to prison pipeline, but it's really more, it's not that. It's, it's more, the discipline though, for, for sure, the law enforcement officers and the SSEs now are not involved in discipline. And it's very clear from the very beginning. And, and we haven't, as far as I know, if I had any issue as far as a discipline within, within the schools being done by somebody it shouldn't have been done by. So I think we, we've lucked out there. Plus, we're a small community. So they, every, if it's an officer for sure, you know, they all know everybody, right? And then even the SSEs, a lot of them are retired police officers from our county. So they've all, you know, they know each other's parents and all that. So it's a little bit different of, of an atmosphere because of what type of law enforcement officer that they are.
Yeah, just one clarification about the SRO and, and the other one, SSE, maybe? Yeah. Are they all in every level of school, like elementary, middle and high schools? And the differences of the two, would it be if one school had one, but not the other one, not both? Thank you.
So, so as they had stated, we are now, as of this last budget cycle, we have 20, we have 23, almost every, we have only one school, I think, that technically doesn't have one assigned to it. So there's, we have enough that they're in the school every day. And it's all of our schools. So elementary, middle and high school. And the high school one before, in the year past, right? They were assigned to the high school and they were in the high school every day. And then they used to split between the middle and the elementary schools as far as what days of the week they'd be there and things like that. But, but now with the school security employees, the difference is the school security employee is an employee of the school system who 95% of the time is a retired police officer. The SROs are a memorandum of, of understanding with a current law enforcement agency. So we have some of those that are SROs, but the majority now are SSEs and, and they're able to build that relationship and, and are dedicated to the school and work in the school setting and don't, you know, get called off to do their regular law enforcement type duties.
Okay. Are there any additional comments or anything?
The only thing I'd like to bring up is that from a student perspective, since we have a student member here, right? And our student board member was at the MAB conference giving, as part of the panel that was there. I think that as a state board, continuing to utilize your students as part of the voice is very, very important. I think, like Deb said, we don't have a lot of people that come to our meetings. We're not, I always joke when I'm with the people at MAB and these people are like, we were in a meeting till midnight and, you know, and people were yelling. And we were lucky to have a meeting that lasts an hour. But I think that having that student voice is key to helping that relationship, to build that relationship. And, and listening to, to the student member, right? And helping to continue that with the state board being part of the, the student government and, and being part of that and keeping that alive, I think is key to hearing from those students because not every parent is going to speak for their student. And a lot of times that people will say, well, you should listen to the parents. But sometimes the parents aren't the voice of the student. You need the voice of the student themselves. So I think that's helpful. And I think that as we move forward, we need to consider all students having that voice in there, especially with the blueprint. I mean, there's some of the things in the blueprint that it's about teachers and it's about expanding on what teachers, but there's students that could give a lot of insight into what would help them as we, especially the career, college and career readiness pillar. pillar, so to speak, of what is there. Because that's the other thing in Allegheny County, we do have a career center and, you know, it's a diamond in the rough, as we all keep saying. But a lot of times we, we were challenged with what industries should we have in our career center? Because as Deb said, we've lost a lot of our manufacturing type businesses. And so what, what, what is the right place to go? What is the right path to go down? We went down the technology path. We went down the medicine path, right? We have a health program and then culinary that she loves so much. But I think we need to consider what students want to do, but also help that, bridge that. And I think the state board does a great job, having a student member, having a parent on the board, having a teacher on the board. I think all of that is helpful. And I think that in the future for local boards, if there's some way to advocate for the need to continue to go to your local boards, right? And, and like if somebody comes to the state board upset about something, you know, making sure they've talked to their local board first, kind of like when I get a phone call and the first thing out of my mouth is supposed to be, have you talked to the school principal, right? Like, or have you talked to? That, that same dialogue needs to happen so that it's clear that they don't just go straight to the top, because we may not have even known it was a problem. And I think that's helpful even for the, at the student level, too. Same concept, right? Students feel like they don't, their voice isn't heard, but it's because sometimes they go straight to the principal, which is what you're supposed to do. But if it doesn't go past the principal, then somebody may never know. So, you know, just having that communication plan, I think, is key across the, the whole state and, and especially at that local level, again.
I just want to say, Maryland has some fabulous student board members, including Ms. Thomas here, but we have, we have truly been blessed. And I, I, for one, as a parent member, fully support having our student members with voting rights as well, like we have at the state. And I, I feel very strongly about the student voice and, and we are blessed to have them.
They have provided incredible value added. So I personally agree with Ms. Morrell. And even what we did with the roundtables with the superintendent, where he went out of his way to reach out to students and to make sure we got students from a cross section of perspectives so that we would hear that. But we are 100% in agreement. Ken, we really value this. You've given us a lot of things to think about. We've got a lot of issues with the blueprint as we work with the AIB. You've given us a lot of things to think about, issues of concern. We've got, as an action, is that we're going to reach out and, and get an update from the broadband folks. It'll probably be after the first of the year, but we'll let you know. But we will definitely do that because it sort of dropped from the radar screen. And again, we appreciate your candor and we want to continue the conversation. As was mentioned earlier, you can participate in our, in our public comment, you can do that virtually. You have our contact information. Please, please, please feel free to reach out at any time when you see something or it doesn't seem right or whatever. We'd rather have you contact us than, than just let some of these issues sort of fester because it rarely ever gets better when you allow these things to fester. So, and you're not going to hurt our feelings, not in the least bit. Again, our goal is help children. So we'll do whatever we have to do to help children and, and to make sure that we take care of our staff and make sure that they're well protected and, and well cared for as best we can. So, Ken, thank you so much.
This year.
Yeah. We're going to have, we're going to be rolling out the strategic plan on tomorrow. And that will roll out tomorrow. And that's the first phase at a high level. But what we also will be having is a, an intensive engagement period that will run, I think, from about February until the end of June with the local school systems and stakeholders in terms of, okay, now, how do we do this and what would it look like in, in Garrett County? Did I have that right, Chip? So you'll see a lot of us and we'll, we really need your help to figure this out because we can't do it alone. And I think we all are trying to do the same thing of helping our children. So if we can sort of figure out how to maximize this opportunity to benefit our children, to make something. One of the things that just sort of, I'm coming to education fairly new, but you would look at the reports over time and you'd see, well, we got like a 1% improvement over three years or 2% improvement. And from my, and I know it's hard and I know we have great people and sometimes we don't always, things aren't always structured to allow great people to do great work. But it's just crazy to see, we say that this is an issue and then we just see year after year, 1% improvement, 2% improvement. It's crazy. This is an opportunity for us to, to do something that potentially changes the trajectory and, and, and outcomes and lifestyles of our children going forward, and their children. We get it right, we do something that will change generations. And we found, the council found us a report from 1916 that the legislature had commissioned on the state of education in the state of Maryland. And many of the issues we're dealing with today are the same issues they were dealing with in 1916. So we invite you to share with us this outrageous dream. In 2120, people are going to look back and say, what did those crazy people do? Because they did something that changed everything for children. So we invite you to be part of that, to accept that, that's what we are, to just say, we got this opportunity. Let's do something crazy that changes everything for our children. And people will look back years from now and say, what did they do? And they write that report, what did they do?
Hopefully we want to continue it, repeat it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Clarence, if I can just mention one thing early on with your comment about trying to get the public more informed about blueprint. I think we've heard from some of the local boards about the board meetings themselves and the presentations, particularly that the state superintendent makes. We've been doing deep dives into the blueprint. And I think some of the local boards have found that those presentations are helpful, not for the public particularly, but you could use them for the public as your local board saw fit. But you all, I think, will benefit from some of those presentations. And maybe some of you are able to listen to the board meetings. I know most of us don't have time maybe to watch the entire day's proceedings. But the blueprint dives are particularly well done and summarize each, each month that we've been having those presentations, a particular component of the blueprint. So it's an avenue you might want to pursue and some of those presentations, I think, could be made available to you for reference, not just for yourselves, but maybe some of that information could be available to the public. And I just want to emphasize one thing that Clarence mentioned about tomorrow in terms of engagement. This opportunity that we've had today to meet with the local boards in your region is particularly valuable. And that came about, I think, from the roundtable discussions that we had in preparation for the strategic planning that we're going to roll out tomorrow. But the word engagement, I think, is the most important word in the strategic plan because it's the opportunity for us to get with you and all of the stakeholders, anyone in Maryland who has a concern or an idea about transforming education in the next 10 years, is welcome to put forth their views and their perspectives on how we can better do education for the kids in Maryland. Engagement with you and all of the stakeholders in our state. We want this to be Maryland's plan. We don't want it just to be this group or that group. It's for everyone. And so as, as Mr. Crawford has said, we welcome your, invite you to join us in this effort. The blueprint is an incredible document that will transform the way education is delivered. But the strategic plan complements what we are trying to do in Maryland to transform the educational experience for our kids. So engagement is critical. It, it needs to be from you as well as from us. So as, as he said, I hope, I hope this can continue in whatever form. And I know that the board members want to support the dialogue as much as we can. But I really encourage you to encourage your publics to engage and participate and be a part and feel ownership with the strategic plan as well as the blueprint. So, yeah, look forward to your help with that. Thank you, Clarence.
Well, thank you much. We appreciate everything and.
One, one other thing, he said that.
Yes, absolutely.
You need to have the superintendent have a YouTube channel or some way to get to those because I get on the internet and I watch your meetings and do my job at the same time and kind of go back and forth. But to try to get back to the right point of the presentation or where you want to be and having to go through it, if, if there were channels or, you know, and there may be.
Yeah, we're, we're on YouTube.
But, but yeah, you're on YouTube, but you have to know where in the hour long or the eight hours that you've been in there. Have a way to get to it.
I see. Sort of tag it in a way.
Some way to tag it.
There is, there are other counties that have figured out how to do that. So we need to figure out a way to link our YouTube, like.
To the agenda.
Link the agenda item to the specific point in the YouTube video. It is possible and I know, yeah, I, everybody doesn't want to watch a nine-hour meeting, so I totally get that. Yes.
Okay. They've given us a second one to go look at, for sure. Because I've gone back and I've tried to find things myself, so I, I know what you're talking about. If I don't know when it was, yes.
I know the state legislature does that, right? Like in, in the bills and you can click on where in the, what bill they're talking about and it takes you to that point in the, in the presentation.
We'll definitely look at that. Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you.